Committee meeting of Monday, May twenty fourth. Members present, myself, and if they're clear. Purpose is to discuss ordinance twenty thirty two and John.
Yes, first of all, that that should be a correction to twenty one thirty two. It is a typo on there. It is listed correctly on the the agenda.
I'm sorry, I said it without even thinking about it.
Um, you're fine.
Um, it is.
Is Mike Burns, are you on here right now? And if you are, you're muted. Mike.
Can I hear you?
Yes, can hear you now. Um, getting ready to open up to ordinance number twenty one thirty two. It's for refinancing of bonds. And I'd like you to discuss that with council, the projected savings. Um, remaining term, I think goes through two thousand thirty three.
Uh, good evening, council and everyone else. Uh, thanks again for allowing me to join your council meeting, our finance meeting tonight. Um, again, my name is Mike Burns. I'm with Bear. Many of you recognize my name from working with you in the past, and I appreciate the opportunity to continue a relationship with the city. Um, got some really good news to share with the city. Uh, we already sold the bonds for the energy bonds. As well as sold the bonds for the road improvements, and both of those came back stronger than we thought they would have, meaning lower interest rates, uh, which is great news. And, um, both of those were purchased by Capital One Bank. Um, Capital One has a relationship already with the city of Ironton. In fact, they own the current bonds that we're talking about refinancing tonight, the two thousand thirteen bonds. And part of their offer, when they submit their proposal, is that they're willing to refinance, refund the two thousand thirteen bonds. Which John refers to as the fire station bond. And part of the, if you decide to accept the proposal, uh, we can refund those bonds and maintain everything exactly the same. So we'll keep the same final maturity, same payment structure. The only thing we're changing is the interest rate. And we'll be able to lower the interest rate from a rate of three point four percent. And lower the interest rate down to an all in rate of two point two two percent. Wow. A two point two two percent includes all closing costs. So that's like APR, APY, when you go and get a car loan. This is the one that includes all closing costs as well as the bank interest rate. They're lowering your rate by about one point two percent, which is generating, uh, interest savings of about sixty eight thousand seven hundred dollars total. Uh, that equates to about five hundred dollars a year worth of interest savings. You may remember, uh, from prior refundings, uh, I mentioned that GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association. They say anything over three percent savings is worth pursuing. And this refunding, if you decide to move forward, would be about six point oh eight percent savings, so twice what GFOA recommends as a good refund. Uh, that's what this refund, so overall, there's really no downside. Um, everything stays the same. Uh, we're just purely lowering the interest rate, generating interest savings. Uh, it will not slow up the closing on the other two bonds. Um, and there's really nothing else to it. Uh, the only downside you could potentially say is these new bonds will not be callable or prepayable until December one of two thousand thirty one, which is the same call date as the other bond that we just recently sold at Capital One. Uh, so in my mind, I think this is a great deal. Uh, and you know, if you were to ask me my financial advice, uh, I would say it's a good opportunity for the city. I'm very happy, uh, whether it's great, would it generate savings for the city on these bonds. But I'll leave it open to you guys. If you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer as I always am.
Yeah, I've got a question, Mike.
Yes, sir.
This Bob Cleary. Um, my question there, I think I heard you say, is this a five year loan? And then you said with the, uh, not callable before twenty thirty one, so that's ten years. Is it five or ten years, the new one?
No, the new one's gonna be the same final maturity. And the final maturity currently, the final maturity currently is December one of thirty three. December one thirty three.
Okay.
So you will not be able to prepay these bonds until December one thirty one, two years early. If you want to.
What was the, do you know what the original loan on it was, or bond, or whatever we done back when we built it?
The original amount or the original maturity date?
Yeah, maturity date.
Uh, two thousand thirty three.
Oh, okay. So that hasn't changed over the years at all?
Not to my knowledge, Bob. Not, not to my knowledge.
All right.
Uh, now, I think this bond had multiple purposes. Um, but, but the final maturity of the bond issues two thousand thirty three.
Mike, the original bond was a thirty year bond, is in fact correct?
I'm not in my, I'm not in my office right now, so I don't, I don't know for sure. Um, I just know what the final maturity is.
Okay. It was twenty, John.
Twenty years.
Two point oh oh five million for twenty years.
Thank you.
Problem.
Mike, this is, uh, Councilman Mike Pierce. Was wondering what percentage rate the other two bonds came in at?
Yeah, so the other two, uh, the energy bonds was a twenty year term. And the all in rate was two point eight zero for twenty years, six, two point eight zero. The, the road and bridge bonds was a twenty year bond, a little longer useful life. And therefore, the all in rate on the road and bridge bond was a two point eight five, six, for twenty years.
I think that's really good, uh, better than what I was hoping for. Thank you.
Good, good questions by both of you. Any other questions from, from anybody?
No, thank you, Mike.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mike.
Bob Nate joined us. I'd entertain a motion to favorably recommend ordinance twenty one thirty two.
Are you making that motion, Craig?
I will.
Or, or do you want me to, or? You say Nate's there now?
He, he is, but I don't know if he can hear us. He was like walking around.
I'll second your motion to favorably recommend, uh, ordinance twenty one thirty two.
On favor, aye.
Aye.
I, I see Nate has disappeared off the screen, so ordinance twenty one thirty two is favorably recommended by finance. Miscellaneous, John?
Uh, yes, I'd like to, uh, ask Mike Burns one other question. Mike, the, the two bonds, the energy and the roadway, those are scheduled to close on June tenth. Is this one going to be a similar closing date?
Yes, they'll all close, um, simultaneously, so all at the same time, um, on the same day.
Okay, so once again, council, those close on June tenth. Um, under miscellaneous, Chairman Harvey, is that you all have received your April two thousand twenty one financial statements? If somebody could note that in, uh, miscellaneous and regular council.
Hey, John, that was the April financials?
Yes, sir.
Okay. On our desk.
Thank you. April. Bob, I'm motion to adjourn finance.
Yes. Okay, I'll second your motion to adjourn finance.
On favor, aye.
Aye.
Finance is adjourned. We got three minutes before we start our regular council meeting.
Thank you again, Mike Burns. I appreciate you, uh, spending some time with us this evening.
Great, John. And thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks, Mike.
Per D from Central Christian on here yet? Don't see him. Am I ever looking him, anyone see him on there? Don't see him.
Hey. I see a user, but I'm not sure who that is.
That's Dick Lucas Communication. So if you all don't mind, we'll stand for a moment of silent prayer and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen.
Amen.
Aye, play the flag to the flag.
The United States.
United States of America. Republic, which is in. Liberty, justice for all. Justice for all.
Roll call please, Marta.
Larry.
Here.
Haney.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
Hawk.
Here.
Klein. Nate on here?
Not yet.
Okay. Pierce.
Here.
Wrist. Here.
Marta, I'll let you know if Nate joins. Um, he was gonna be, he was gonna be a few minutes late.
Okay.
Next, next in our council packets, we have the, um, agenda meeting minutes of the finance meeting of May thirteenth, twenty twenty one, and the regular council meeting minutes of May thirteenth, twenty twenty one. The, there any errors, omissions, additions to those meeting minutes? Marta, I have one. The finance committee meeting of May thirteenth, um, committee member Harvey was present. I'm not listed under attendees. And also Nate has joined us, Marta. Next, we have audience participation. Anyone have anything on behalf of the citizens of Ironton? Chris?
Um, yeah, Mr. and Mrs. Cliver, five, six, or fifteen sixty four, that new, um, they wanted to thank the, uh, street department for fixing a, an issue with some, hey, well, I guess, asphalt outside of their house. Um, so I want to say thank you. Also received a few comments about the block wall and it's how well, or how well it was maintained. Um, so money well spent on the, uh, new mining equipment. That's all I got.
Thanks, Chris. Other audience participation this evening? Mayor, you wanna address council?
Sometimes I never know if you want me to do it in miscellaneous or in audience participation, so.
Typically, if, if we were live, it'd be now.
Okay, um, everything is moving forward. Um, at the splash park. Supposed to open up, uh, Memorial Day, where, uh, the planned tenant, it's now been released, the, the shakery, which is the, it's a satellite location for the shake shop will be opening there. Um, burning hot dogs, shaved ice, and soft serve, I believe, ice cream. Um, and, uh, probably seeing the news soon, the proposed project, which I believe we showed to you all last meeting. Um, you know, calling for some, um, donations and help with that project, and it's a pretty exciting time, and we're looking forward to hopefully completing that project by the end of the year. So, but other than that, I, I know that there's a few events going on leading up to Memorial Day. One particular that I would like to kinda put some, um, information out on is the fireworks show that'll be happening Saturday. Um, the riverfront will be closed to the public starting at two thirty. Um, you know, there's been a lot of money on this fireworks show. Um, there's a lot of safety measures that have to be put in place, and if, you know, we have people trying to break the rules to get over there, you know, they're gonna, the people putting on the show won't put the show on because of it, so, uh, we're recommending a few places that people will be able to get a good spot to watch this show. Um, you know, we have some of our parking lots off Second Street. The one place they will not be able to go is that grassy area next to the overpass across from me, Handstil. That is part of the drop zone of the fireworks. Um, recommendations were some of the parks in the area, at the street park, also Little League fields, you know, wanna take a lawn chair there, um, set up, watch, enjoy the show. Make sure if you carry anything in, clean up after you, you leave. Um, anywhere else, we were saying, farmer's market area might be a good area to watch from. You'll be able to see this from everywhere. It's gonna be a pretty big show. Um, just make sure if you're leaving your cars parked and unattended, that you keep those locked for safety measures. Um, that was straight from the chief of police. Um, saying that, you know, we've had, you have, we see an increase during the Memorial Day weekend of, you know, theft and things like that. Other than that, um, just be safe this weekend. Enjoy Memorial Day. It's nice to have things getting back to normal.
Mr. Mayor. What time does fireworks show start? I'm sorry.
Nine.
Nine?
Yep.
Thank you.
Mike?
That was my question.
Okay. Mayor, other activities, Navy night is scheduled, um, you wanna?
Yes, Navy nights. That is open, seven PM Thursday. They'll have the veterans memorial service at Woodland Cemetery at two on Sunday.
Bob?
Mayor, is the, um, what time are, what time is the floodgates gonna be off limits for the fireworks?
Uh, we're gonna start shutting down around two thirty. The, the company or the, the folks that are putting the show on will be starting to set up around four there, so we have to, wanna start shutting things down there around two thirty. We have to close off the bike path and a few other areas.
I think that they're, they're gonna put some food trucks on the riverside. There were the, uh,
Yeah, I spoke to that, the fat boy queue is supposed to be there, and I've just let them know they need to be gone by two thirty that day.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
That's all I got.
Nate?
I just wanted to, uh, tell Mayor, good job, and our, uh, city employees, and we had a lot of volunteers for, um, cleanup, uh, day that, that weekend. Uh, a couple weeks ago, there's a lot of people that came out and it was organized. We didn't get to do that last year. There's a lot of people there, and I was, it was really great to see all the trees planted and everything mulched. It looks nice. Um, so good job on all that. Um, I, I kinda worked on trimming some trees that didn't go and, and that kinda thing, and, and you could tell it wasn't taken care of somewhat last year. It was much needed, but I think everybody was all hands on deck, and it was a, it was a great uh, success in my mind. So good job, Mayor, uh, city, city employees, and volunteer, uh, workers. And, uh, I think it's, it's much needed in the city, and, uh, hope that continues in the future.
Thank you.
Greg, if I could have just one moment. Um, I wanna ditto, uh, Nate's comments. Uh, everyone I've spoken to thinks, uh, it, it just looks great downtown. So thanks to the mayor and, and Mike and everyone who worked on that. And I also want to mention, um, uh, very proud and pleased with, with council and the administration, John and the mayor. And I also want to mention, um, uh, very proud and pleased with, with council and the administration, John and the mayor. Um, our last council meeting, we passed two very, very important, uh, pieces of legislation regarding the contract with ABM, which essentially sets our city facilities into the twenty first century. And, uh, and the street paving, uh, project. And, uh, you know, there have been streets in town that have been waiting five decades to get attention. And, uh, I think both of those were monumental and, uh, just really pleased with what this council is doing. So thanks to everyone.
Mayor?
Yeah, I had one more thing. I, uh, I forwarded on the asset management plan that Nate Davis spoke with some of us about during the, uh, Public Utilities Committee meeting, uh, whenever that was last week, Wednesday. Um, and you'll be able to find the analysis and everything in that document. It's got everything that you, you need. Um, I forwarded that on just before this meeting today.
Thank you. Any other audience participation?
Sam, would you care to pass that, um, depiction of the, of the kids' park on to us?
Yeah, sure. I will send you the media release that was actually made. Uh, we've sent out to all the local newspapers and, uh, broadcast stations.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Next on our agenda, we have communications. And as was mentioned and summarized in the last council meeting, a letter from Ruth and Tony Crow regarding eight oh four South Fourth Street. Uh, that is in our agenda packets for this evening as part of the minutes, but was addressed in the last council meeting. Reports are none. Ordinances, if the clerk could please give first reading to ordinance twenty one thirty two by title only.
An ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed one million four thousand, no, one million four thousand of bonds by the city of Ironton, Ohio, for refunding the various purpose bonds, series two thousand thirteen, and declaring an emergency. First reading.
Bob?
Yeah, I'd like to mention that they got favorable recommendation from the finance committee meeting. And I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules and give twenty one thirty two second and third reading by title only.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Larry.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Wrist.
Aye.
If the clerk could please give ordinance twenty one thirty two second and third reading by title only.
An ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed one million four thousand dollars of bonds by the city of Ironton, Ohio, for refunding the various purpose bonds, series two thousand thirteen, and declaring an emergency. Second reading. An ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed one million four thousand dollars of bonds by the city of Ironton, Ohio, for refunding the various purpose bonds, series two thousand thirteen, and declaring an emergency. Third reading.
Bob?
Make a motion. We adopt ordinance twenty one thirty two.
Second.
Thank you. Mike or Beth? Up to you, Marta. Any discussion? Nate, you have any questions that you joined us late?
No, I've already talked to John about it. I'm, I'm on board.
Okay.
I'm all about slaving my name in.
I told him, me and you were coaching an important T-ball game, so you're gonna be running a few minutes late, so.
Correct.
All right. Roll call please.
Larry.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein. Pierce.
Aye.
Wrist.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty one thirty two is adopted. Next, we have resolutions and there are none. Next is miscellaneous. Um, Chris?
Uh, quick question for John, if he doesn't care. Um, I've got some information. Um, John, have you ever received the actual guidelines for, um, the COVID stimulus? Have, have we ever gotten the guidelines for the spending on that? I know there were some gray areas.
You did, John.
Talking on the, um, the ARPA funds?
Yes.
No, they're, they're still releasing. I tried to click on a link today and it was what I had received two weeks ago. So I am watching.
Go ahead, sorry.
I'm watching for updates and we'll distribute those as I get them.
Sounds like you and I got a similar email. So, thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Bob?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, miscellaneous, uh, we received the April financials. They're laying on our desk in council chambers.
Do you like to file and make those part of the minutes?
Yes. See, file, make part of the minutes. Thank you.
Can I get a second on that? Nate?
A second.
Roll call please.
Larry.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk. Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Wrist.
Aye.
Uh, under miscellaneous, I'd like to mention that our next council meeting on June the tenth will be live in council chambers. And there will be no audience. It'll be council, the solicitor, clerk, mayor, finance director, and limited department heads that the mayor feels necessary to speak to council. We will move towards having audience in July. Um, but the plan for now is to, um, meet live on June the tenth. If you, um, have been vaccinated and choose not to wear a mask in council chambers, that is up to you. If you choose to wear your mask, that is fine too. Um, remember, we are broadcast live through Dave Lucas Communications, so, um, I will meet with Dave and his tech to make sure that our microphones are working in case you are masked so that you're able to be understood. Because on these broadcasts, where you're able to see our mouths moving and even if you can't understand what we're saying, maybe able to read lips, may be a little more difficult with a mask on. So we'll, um, I've, I've talked to Dave and we'll make sure that the, um, that the audio is working in council chambers. Nate, did you have something?
Uh, I did. I just, I had on note here, I wanted to follow up. I'm not sure if Susan's on here. Um, we, we had a zoning, uh, workshop and we discussed, uh, the creation of new zoning maps that are updated, easy to edit and easy to share. I just wanted to see if, if she, or Brett was able to talk to Kevin Wood about being able to produce those.
She is not on here. Um.
Okay, Mayor, could you, could you pass that on to her and have her email me?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. That's all I had. Thank you, Craig.
Bob?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Roll call please.
Larry.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk. Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Wrist.
Aye.
Thank you all for attending tonight. Have a good Memorial Day weekend. And thank you to all of our servicemen and women that put their lives on the line to keep us free.
Have a good weekend.
Have a good weekend. Stay safe.
Have a good weekend. Stay safe.
Yeah.